Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the town board meeting for September twenty-third. I ask everybody, please turn off their cell phones and electronic devices. I ask everybody to please rise.
We're to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I'll also ask Ramona Saff to speak. Thank you. So we have a public hearing. Chairman want to lead the remarks?
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held in the town of Lewiston, Niagara County, New York on the twenty-third day of September twenty-four, commencing at six o'clock PM at the town hall. Thirteen-seventy-five Bridge Road, Lewiston, New York. On the adoption of a local law terminating the environmental conservation commission and creating the Planning and Environmental Review Board. Said law is intended to eliminate the town of Lewiston Environmental Conservation Commission and remain and redefine the current town of Lewiston Planning Board as the Planning and Environmental Review Board together, with establishing all appropriate authorities therein. The complete text of said law is on file at the office of the town clerk and is available for review by any interested person during business hours. At such public hearing, all persons interested who wish to be heard will be heard. May this September ninth, twenty-four.
So go ahead and open the public hearing. If you don't want to speak on the environmental, I call your name. Just let me know and I'll put a check mark next to your name. I'll get to you when we go to the other public speaker. So, uh, do we know? Did I say that right?
That is correct. Uh, now I'm speaking on another topic.
Okay. Tim Henderson.
Evening. My name is Tim Henderson. I live in Lewiston Village. About thirty years ago, when I first started working for the town, there was a law or a local ordinance on the books that limited the height of a landfill to thirty feet. This landfill ignored that ordinance and it had about seventy or eighty feet. There was no mechanism for enforcement. And you wound up paying a small fine. You know, to a multimillion dollar company that has fines in their budget, it was nothing. This prompted the establishment of the Environmental Commission in nineteen ninety-one. Now, since nineteen ninety-one, uh, as far as Lewiston's environment goes, nothing's really changed. Uh, if anything, uh, there's been more challenges that have been created. So to dissolve the commission at this time, I think it's ill-advised and it's sending the wrong message, uh, to the waste industry for one. I mean, they would love it if it made things easier for them, but I'm totally against the dissolution of it.
Thank you. Richard Dolce.
Thank you. I live right on the edge of Lewiston. My home address is Jumpstown, but I live in Lewiston. The Environmental Board has been around a long time and accumulated a lot of history and knowledge and details. I used to be the plant manager of the De Pont plant in Niagara Falls. And I know that the environmental issues here in Niagara County are very tough. There's a lot that's going on and I know that this county has more environmental problems probably than most counties. I know at one time the Department of Environmental Protection in the state was not doing any soil sampling in Niagara County because they were afraid they were going to find contamination anywhere. So we have a board that has this knowledge, that has the depth, has people who are interested. And if we move that over to another group of people, they will have to come up to speed, they won't have the knowledge. And you're going to have a group of people who are relatively uninformed dealing with great big corporations. Now, I've done a lot of reading about the history of the way lobbying goes in Washington, DC. The lobbyists for the big companies come in and talk to people like yourselves. But then it's gone beyond just education and they are starting now and they're doing it, following these up with nice big campaign contributions from the people who are on their side. I hope we're not getting into that ugly kind of a pattern here because that'll spoil our community. We all have to vote for the health and safety of the people here in our county and our community, not to help the big companies get what they want. They got plenty of resources. And I know, I used to be in De Pont and we used to complain all the time. They have the resources. And I think it's the best interest of this county to continue, or the town of Lewiston, to continue with the board as it is now. With people who know what's going on, who are dedicated, who have put a lot of effort into it, they're going to be able to make some good help to improve the health and safety of the people here in our county and in our town. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mary Plant. Mary Plant, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Take your time.
Jordan. I'm Mary Plant, good evening. I live, uh, in the Watts, Richards area, et cetera. And I've been there most sixty years. So in that time, I've seen a lot in terms of things that I was concerned about, et cetera. And way, way back, we had a group called ROLL. I marched with them, I pivoted with them, and this was all to protect the environment, et cetera. And I'm glad I did that. However, I'm not saying that's going to happen again, but I can see no reason why we have a commission that is doing their job and is there to protect why you would, anyone would want to disband it. In today's day and age, the environment is in a lot of trouble. And not just in any year, but all over the country due to, uh, due to climate change, due to everything. So I really hope we don't go backwards. That we continue to try to meet what's coming head-on and not after the fact.
Andrew Davis.
Different topic.
Okay. Wendy Swergen.
Hi, everyone, I'm Wendy Giles-Fernich. I live at eight-eight-nine Elliott Tribe in Lewiston. I was reading over the proposal and I didn't see anything about the data for the impetus of this. Like, why, why is it happening? Especially at this very extremely fragile time in Lewiston. I was on the Lake Ontario Ordinance Works Community Action Committee and we spent a lot of time as facilitator and Doug Sarno trying to get this, you know, the, you know, K-sixty-five area cleaned out from behind our school. This is a time where we need not just a commission, we need belts and suspenders. We need both, you know, the legal arm and, and the advisory arm. We can't just, you know, be up against all the, the environmental degradation we've suffered for, you know, decades. Uh, it's really unfortunate, it's a really bad look at this, at this point in time to try to disband something when we really desperately need more environmental knowledge and inspiration for Lewiston.
Mike Zimmermann.
I'm here for the primary.
Okay, okay. Totally different, you're on the agenda. Brock Davy.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brock Davy. I live in Lake Drive in Lewiston. Here to speak about the dissolution of the, uh...
He's asking you to speak up.
Sorry. Is this a little better?
Yeah, he can hear you.
I'm here to speak about the dissolution of the Environmental Commission. I've been on the commission maybe eight years and, uh, we were a very active commission. I, I believe that you should be disbanding this commission because it does serve a vital function. And the optics of this is just, um, pretty bad. Lewiston is home to the Loo site, which is, uh, the, uh, from World War II, the Manhattan Project. There's a lot of reactive materials there. We're also, um, home to Nider disposal and to a chemical waste dump. All three of these are very close to the Loo's important store. And, um, they really need oversight. I wish we had more authority to, um, to bring it up to task, but, um, that hasn't been, hasn't been given to us. Also, we were pretty active until after General Wolfcamp passed away. Things got a little bit hairy. We had issues with how do we continue with this stuff? And, um, but somehow the administration has decided that we don't need the deceiters and other things and we haven't deceived them anything from the administration as to what has been our purvey in the past. I understand that you want to streamline government, but, um, this just doesn't seem to be the right way to do it. If you've been unhappy with the things that we, the way that we are running or if there's something that's lacking, um, it would have been incumbent upon everyone to come to us and say, this is how we'd like you to improve, instead of just deciding to throw everything out. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Brian. Oh, no. Mark Dallow.
My name is Mark Dallow and everybody will remember this address, two-three-four-five Bridge Road. Um, so full disclosure, I'm resident of the area for the past twenty-nine years. I've lived in the village and now I'm in the town, Lewiston and Ransonville. Uh, as far as labels are concerned, I'm a P B biological scientist, I'm a landowner, I have a hundred-and-sixty acres, uh, really successional growth, I own the city's forests. I'm a tree hugger. So, um, but I'm also a current member of Planning Board and Environmental Conservation Commission and that's, again, I think important for everybody to know that while I'm speaking. So, you know, as I look around this room, uh, what I see are people who are citizens who are really concerned about this environment and that's great. And this is wonderful to see this, this many people coming to see how government works. And our climate is influenced by where we live. We have Niagara Falls, we have Great Lakes, we're in a great area. I find this to be wonderful. The River Corridor has received a certain designation, it's Ramsar designation, which is one of these international, um, things that really plays a lot of global importance of the biodiversity that's found here. And, um, I think most importantly for us is that land use and modification within that watershed is something that we need to be concerned about. And so an environmental commission is very important for that reason, that we really make sure that we ensure that we keep in step with what that designation implies, but also I think for the greater good of our community. So what do we as stakeholders do to be good stewards? And these are just examples and my observations after being there for a number of years. Um, and some of these things are things that I've seen in other environmental commissions and what they do. And so one of the things that we worry about are things like protecting our local natural resources. And, um, when I think about that, uh, as a scientist, one of the things that happened recent, uh, a number of years ago, um, was, um, at the Water Pollution Control Center with your predecessor, uh, as they built the town park there with a baseball arena. And, uh, my concern was, is it safe for children to be on that field? And so I did what a scientist would do, which is experiments. We actually went out to the feature dishes and captured to see if there were aerosols that were produced by the plant. And so Timmy is safe up in right field when he's catching that ball. So it's really great to do that sort of stuff. I'm sure all of you read my paper about this. You know, the durnas, it's collecting dust somewhere. But I think it's important for me, you know, to measure, you know, to, to tell you that these things are measurable and it's one of the things that a community needs to do, to, you know, be informed. And, and I think that's what's important about this, that, you know, it's one thing for folks that have a knee-jerk reaction to things, but I think it's also important to really, you know, play through these things and ask, are we doing the right things? And I, I think that we are. I mean, it's a wonderful community and I love being here. Um, ensuring our compliance with state and federal regulations, we have a planning board and they do a wonderful job of this. They always look for secret seeker designation. Every one of these has been really thoroughly addressed by people like Tim Masters and the rest of the people that I've worked with on that board so far. And I've, I've really been impressed. Uh, if we go further and start to look at long-term sustainability issues in this area, I start to think about these and, you know, the natural beauty of here is, is undeniable. And we've got all sorts of reasons that people come here as tourists because of our fishing and our hiking and our trails and, and our biking and just about all sorts of things that you can imagine. Uh, we have a Niagara Greenway Commission that really helps to ensure that these things happen in our community. So these are all the great things. Um, we don't live in Shangerlau, there are some things that, again, are questionable. Um, there is one person in the audience I saw from one of the, uh, local companies from, uh, Chemical Waste Management, who doesn't want to put, um, that firm on so this harm near to, um, acceptance. And it's one of these things that we have to really weigh long and hard. And it's one of these issues, um, as we're seeing now with the low site, is what it costs to remediate a site. And so what if, what if Chemical Waste Management went bankrupt? And what if they left us with this place? What would we be left with at that point? And what would it take? Bring it back to a natural condition, a natural state. And that's the sort of thing that becomes, I think, a, a concept or a talk that comes from an environmental commission, that they can bring up all those things. It can happen in other groups too. And I don't say that it's not something the planning board could or should do, but I think that you have these other kinds of proactive sorts of conversations about what ifs or maybe other things that are out there. Like in the Water Pollution Control Center, um, microplastics have made it into conversations, the P V O S, the, uh, here we go, per or polychlorinated, uh, fennel and, um, other alcohol substances like that that are receiving lots of attention because they're forever chemicals. And so are there going to be things that you are going to have to deal with fairly soon in, in the waste stream? Or viruses, we know we can measure them, but are they ever going to be something that the government's going to come down and say, we need to pay more attention to these things? So some of these sorts of things, I think, are, are topics that could come up in whatever board, commission, whatever survives this, that I just want to make sure that those things do have a place and will remain that way. Mitigating the effects of climate change are something that I think that this area has done a remarkable job. Many, many years ago, we, we joined the New York State Climate Smart Community pledge in two thousand and ten. Uh, I think there's plenty out there on the table that can be done with that. We had people from Buffalo, University of Buffalo, SUNY Buffalo come and speak to us about some of the ways that we can do some more things with this climate smart community. Um, many of the other communities around here are much more actively involved with that. One of the reasons is there's money, I mean, there's money on the table. And we do great things here and I think that we could score big points and probably receive funding through that stream. So it is one of these things that I believe that the commission in and of itself so far has been negligent in, in following up on some of these things. So I'm not sure if it's something that can be built into it better or into some other venue or avenue at this community to follow up on those sorts of things because I'd love to see those things happen. And then you get into, uh, issues of education and engagement of the community. And I think that that's where maybe a board like a commission that's separate from the planning board may be able to do things that the planning board can't or maybe just, just the feel of it can come slightly differently. So things that make it into the sentinel, yes, I will say that, and other sorts of places like that. We might be able to talk about things like, uh, for instance, NU is holding another paint drive. Um, those of you that have been a part of that, have seen that new paint drive. We fill up three tractor trailers full of paint the last time. And you know what? That paint gets recycled truly. They mix it back together to blend certain colors and it gets resold. So it really does recycle, like the cans they crush and recycle the metal. So there's wonderful things we do in this community, but we don't hear about them enough. And that's one of these things that I think maybe an environmental commission could be tasked with things like that, to make sure that the word gets out about things. So this educational part, maybe it could happen in planning. Maybe it could happen in some other portion of the town that it doesn't get out enough for all the good things we do around here. One of them, I'm sorry, but I've got to do it, and that is to say something about Steve in particular. I think what he did with, um, deciding to go forward and, and purchase Stonehaven for this community was wonderful. It's laudable, I, we should all give him a round of applause for that. It is a wonderful thing. Am I trying to suck up to him? No, not really. But really from the perspective that you've recognized, even though you're not a tree hugger, um, that these natural reasons, regions like this, that some places should be remained, now such, natural ones.
But same, I'm a hundred percent for the environment. A hundred percent for the environment.
I, I don't.
The passion is some people, I'm actually a Greenway Commissioner.
I don't, we are.
By the smart community, I mean, we are doing the things.
Yep.
This board put you on the environmental commission?
Sure have.
This board put you on the planning board to do?
You're smart.
To do what we're trying to do. We put Zach Collister on the board, the planning board, to do what we're trying to do. We have a DEC air quality engineer who we're going to appoint to the planning board on January first. Um, and, I mean, you've been on the board how long now, the environmental?
I think it's still over, not even two years yet, I don't believe.
Okay. So I appreciate, I appreciate what you said about the deficiencies and the things that aren't being done.
That's right.
So, to, you know, for, for people to paint a picture that the environmental board is doing all these wonderful things, they, I hate to say they haven't that. And, and we're trying to get that to where it's going to happen and I'm all for protecting, everything everybody's talking about. I want to do it more than we ever have, but it's not being done.
Right. And, and so, you know, to your, to your point, I think that we have to see how we can make that happen. So whether it's an either or, you know, does this, does this continue to exist? And if so, great, how do we empower it to do these things? So regulations behind what that board is, the commission is supposed to do is insane when I started to read some of the things that were out.
I agree, it's too much of an ask.
So, but many hands also make light work. So on the other end of it, should we have to really help the planning board or help other parts of this community? And so do we need more folks to be a part of the process to help this? I know streamlined maybe isn't the right way to use when you have to more people, but does it help to, to alleviate the burden of any individuals? So that's where I'm, I'm torn. And I think many people are that way. I'm sure that you probably feel this way too and some of the others. It wasn't an easy decision for you to come to thinking that the best thing to do is to kill the board, like the commission. Sorry, don't mean to call it a board. But I think that, you know, we, we may need to just take a step back and think about it. You know, are we?
Mark, I got to ask you.
I'm done.
Okay.
Should we really think about, you know, we're, we're considering, you know, how do we move forward? That's all.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
And I want to tell everybody, we're making no decision tonight. This is a work in progress. And Mark has volunteered to come in and work with myself, the attorney, Sarah Lecter, and Tim Masters, and to make this, everything that the environmental does on the planning board, make sure nothing falls through the cracks. So that is the intention. Okay, so thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Zach Collister.
Good evening, guys and councilwoman. Uh, so I'm Zach Collister. I have multiple properties in Lewiston, so I have acres in Yellowstone, New York. Current chairman of the Environmental Commission, planning board member, chairman of the Natural Preservation Commission, build to Lewiston Lake, uh, local one-front revitalization program amongst, uh, many other nonprofit and school works. So, um, I'm here on behalf of our commission and residents that have voiced concerns. Steve, I agree with you. I slightly don't on things that we weren't active. I a hundred percent believe we should be more active at the town board's direction, not meeting when we should be meeting, uh, projects that were stated by Mr. Davy, not being presented to the Environmental Commission over the past couple of years. That's where the failure came in. We should have known our own code more to, to hold the town accountable to that. So a hundred percent on board with the streamlined government, you know. I know that streamlined government is a, a good thing, but not when it's kicking the bucket over. So the local law as it stands does not cover what the Environmental Commission does. It doesn't have the investigative legislature. You guys yourselves, as the town attorney, have two pages worth of gaps that have not been addressed yet. So if those are addressed and the environmental commission can be the proactive commission that it is, um, that's, that's one thing. Right now, the way it is, it's a review board. We review what comes to our table. We can't proactively call the archore of engineers and have a meeting that we do annually. Can't visit the low site in a Niagara storage, uh, containment cab, you know? It's probably where I lost all my hair, it's walking that cab every year for the past fifteen years. So we can't proactively work like we are now with the Buffalo Niagara Waterkeeper to provoke, to create educational pamphlets. Is everybody aware of the escarpment here? Right? The mountain, the escarpment? Is everybody aware of the ecosystems that exist only here in the world? Probably not. And that's on us and we've been working with organizations to create these pamphlets. Um, Canada, partners to the West, have made their escarpment a UNESCO biosphere. It's protected for life. You never see a factory go up there. You have the Niagara River, right? Seven miles of the Niagara River, more than any other town minus Grand Island, that's the one that was the loop, than any other town along the Niagara River. Seven miles of waterfalls. And then we have corporations, Occidental, CWM, who's in the middle of, um, you know, looking to open back up, Modern Disposal, and they're all behind Luport. That town in Michigan did their job. They stopped the containment from being shipped there, five hundred yards behind their school. Where's our craft, right? One thousand yards behind our school. Let alone on the school, because the school eventually built on the Manhattan Project too, the lands that were surrounded that, so. So what I'm saying here is open to changing law. The law has to provide oversight. It has to give a commission the ability to subpoena people. We have to be able to proactively work on projects. I say, whatever you want to do, it needs more authority, if not, like, no difference. Should be able to create laws. Environmental commission in years past tried passing a, uh, escarpment law, like the Tom Perea, that protects our skirt, that didn't go through. We've worked with the town board and the engineers on cleaning up the river long subdivision that we're expanding, which shows the same problems that in the first, uh, subdivision went in were, you know, rectified. Um, we're working actively with Modern, you know, it's supposed to be a four-phase program to then improve in the community, recycling it. That got lodged and we haven't heard of phase two, three, or four yet. Um, so there are things that are happening that we cannot leave to just oversight and review, okay? Should be only able to see what is presented by the town board. Should be able to say, this resident has a problem, we should investigate this. We are a host community, not a single park in this community has a recycling bin in it. That's, what the hell are you doing? You have East Aurora, Tana Niagara, Pendleton, like Williamsville, all have separate environmental commissions that have full authority to make these decisions and to advise the town board. Town board, you know, can't do it alone, so that's why you have these commissions. The goal is to group it into one, it needs to have the same legislative powers that are in existing town boards. So that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Catherine Elias, are you afterwards?
Yes.
Mark is well?
Yes.
Rita Guyven?
Yeah, please.
Okay, Bill Guyven?
William Guyven, four-twenty-one-ninety straight, former councilman, presently no credentials whatsoever. I served on the board for about six years back in the nineties, where we created the environmental commission. We had a specific objective in mind, was to address the major issues facing the town Lewiston. After I left the board, over the time, the commission has warped into a review board, spending more time on subdivisions than actually on the bigger projects. What Steve has said, what Zach has said, was part of my presentation, I won't repeat it. The commission has the best of intentions, but for some reason it has, as I said, warped away. When I was the liaison for the board, I tried to get away from doing the reviews, talking to Tim Masters, why is this coming to the environmental commission? It's a one-house subdivision out of Major Street in Sandmore. Doesn't seem like it belongs in our turf. We spent too much time on that, and we missed some of the big projects. I have full faith and confidence that if all the good things in the environmental commission law gets folded in and blended in with the planning board, and the planning board has the authority to set up sub-commission, subcommittees, and ad hoc committees to address specific issues when they come to task, instead of having the board, the wall, just wander around getting research on this topic or that topic, focus it on the topics that are hot topics at the time. Hopefully, some members of the board can be proactive, keep an eye on each one of those environmental issues that Zach spoke, able to list it in the Sentinel, and make this a good planning board with the right objectives and protect the environment.
Thank you. Margie Strombeck?
Later.
Later, okay.
And Matthew Feldman?
Good evening. My name's Matthew Feldman. I live in eight oh sixth the circle. I do serve on the environmental conservation commission, but I'm here as a resident. I used to come pretty regularly to the town board when there were environmental issues. Because I really, really care about our community. I don't need to tell everybody how unique it is. And a lot of us have lived a lot of different places. It is distinct, unique, and extraordinary. But I used to come whenever there were environmental issues also because we have some unique and distinct and extraordinary environmental challenges in this community. And supervisor, you actually put me on the, on the environmental commission. And I've told this story over the years because I called with some questions and concerns. And, and you responded that there was a vacancy, and you put me on the commission. And I told that story because I thought that was extraordinary leadership. And, there's a bar. There's no button, there's more. I think we can probably all agree that over the years, historically, there have been some poor leadership decisions when it comes to environmental issues. That's part of why we have some of these unique and extraordinary issues here. A, a decision to eliminate a distinct environmental commission will be one of those poor leadership decisions when it comes to environmental issues in this town. I was shocked. I was incredulous when I heard that the environmental commission would be eliminated. That might be appropriate in other communities. We're all for efficiency. I'm all for efficiency. And being a review board for essentially planning issues is not what we should be doing as a commission. And the environmental commission's mandate is not what the planning board should be doing either. Our issues require distinct and dedicated focus of an environmental conservation commission. We shouldn't be spending our time on planning issues. We should be spending our time on that acrid air that I noticed when I came down the hill tonight. We should be focused on the distinct and significant issues that we have in this community. So I'm very much in favor of a conversation about redirecting and refocusing and re-energizing an environmental commission. Moving its authority over to the planning board would be necessary, but it will still diminish the focus. It will diminish the focus, and it will make our community less safe. And a decision that makes our community less safe will be one more decision in a series of problematic decisions. Please do not do this. Please come and talk with the environmental conservation commission. Let's work together as a town. Let's focus and prioritize the environmental issues. Let's not lock the door and stop those meetings and then introduce an amendment. That's not the way to go about this. Thank you.
Tim Masters?
Do you want me to cut now or?
Yeah.
Tim Masters, building inspector. I've worked with the town for seventeen years, and I asked Steve if I could speak tonight regarding the environmental commission and the reconstructing, reaffirming the mission of the, of the environmental commission. I've had, you know, conversations with past supervisors, Dennis Brochet, Steve Ryder. And I have been a proponent of moving the planning, moving the environmental commission to the planning board for the last fifteen years. So why would I say that? Well, I am all about streamlining government. And I'm not about, I mean, I, for crying out loud, I got a solar farm in my backyard. I got, you know, to say I'm, I'm anti-environment is, couldn't be further from the truth. The board members right now, we're all Lewiston residents. We all care about the, the environment. There's anybody here that doesn't care about the environment. You know, our office and that, those offices have spent meeting after meeting after meeting with the Nicerta people, and we got the climate smart community designation, Mark. We got that. I went to all the training. Now, I had to be trained to get that designation. Rob Morial is saying hour after hour after hour, meeting. We got all the streetlights changed to LEDs. We now got the Buffalo Street streetlights changed to LEDs. Every building in the town is now LEDs. We've added insulation. We've added all these different things because we are climate friendly. We care about our climate footprint. We have a good designation. We are one of the first communities in Western New York to have a, a climate smart community. So, so don't ever think that we're against the environment, because we're, we're not. But if, if you would, if anybody wants to come to my office and talk to me about it, I, I, I can give you more time than Steve's going to allow me to talk right now. But just go on the website. Go, go on the town of Lewiston's website. Go on boards and commissions. Look at the meeting minutes. Read the meeting minutes and see what's happened. Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty, it's all on there. Read it, and you'll get an educated glimpse of what has been going on and what has not been going on. So from my perspective, I believe, I fully believe, that, but, you know, it all, all comes down to people, right? You got people that care about their jobs, and you got people that care about their town, and they're, and you got people that just do the basic stuff to pass by. I believe that the planning board, if they have, like Mr. Guyven said, a subcommittee or an ad hoc committee, could do a better job on it. Why do I say that? Because then you have a planning board sitting up there, you have an attorney sitting there, you have an engineer sitting there, you have a building inspector sitting here. We're all in the same room at every single meeting. Everything that gets talked about, oh, Bob, what, well, what, what do you think about that? He's a town engineer, he's sitting right there. Oh, the town attorney's sitting right there. You got all these people in one room at every single meeting. To me, you could get more done, more profitable, and more streamlined with better care for the environment if it's done this way. That's my opinion.
So what we've decided to do is leave this, that's it for comments on the public hearing. We're going to leave the public hearing open. Again, this is a working document. We do not want anything to slip through the cracks. We do care about the environment. Right now, there is no environmental oversight. I mean, you know, Mr. Collister wrote a beautiful post on social media. If, if everything that was in that post was occurring right now, we wouldn't be having this conversation. And these are the people, Rob Morial's the liaison, I'm the supervisor. We're active in knowing what's going on with the environmental commission. It's not working the way it was designed at all right now. And that's why we put Mark Gell on, on the, of the board. Right now, on our planning board, we have Pat Baker, who's got forty years of environmental experience. He actually was going to get off the planning board. When I told him we were moving environmental to planning, he was all excited because that's his expertise. Again, we have a D E C air quality engineer retired that we're putting on the planning board to handle environmental issues. We are going to create a subcommittee of the planning board, environmental, to do exactly what Zach said, to do exactly what Mark said. Mark is willing to sit down with us. We don't want any aspect of the environmental commission to fall through the cracks. Do we have to do some different things? Yes, because there's some things written. But nobody is, I'm sorry, sir, on the tape to get rid of it. We're not getting rid of the environmental oversight. We are not getting rid of environmental oversight. We are not getting rid of environmental oversight. We are changing the focus and putting it where we believe it's going to best be served. There's other communities that do that. I think the city of Niagara Falls has a planning environmental board and commission. That is our intent. Our intent is to continue with the environmental aspect, which is done by the planning board, like Tim said, with an attorney at every meeting, with a town engineer at every meeting, with Tim Masters at every meeting. And I'll let Rob Morial speak a little bit more because he's the liaison to the environmental commission.
Oh, there's a few things. Obviously, number one, with Steve, I, I live in Lewiston, I have kids and grandkids. I would never do anything to, to hurt, to damage our environment. I had a collision shop for forty-two years. We had our chemicals all the way, we had our fluorescent lights all the way, our batteries. Nothing was thrown out. Always, you know, for the environment. And it says here, the E C C's duties, obviously you know your duties because you said it in there. I made some notes on there by the commission. It says here, investigating environmental capabilities. We had dirt stored at Joe Davis, and then it was spread out, it was brought in from Niagara Falls. I don't know if we, did they ever, anybody get a report on what was in that dirt before it was spread out at Joe Davis? We had a six million dollar cleanup on Upper Mountain Road, a radiation cleanup. I don't know what was done there. I think that'd be a perfect thing for the environmental commission. They should have looked into that. And is there any other hotspots in Lewiston? I don't know. We had most site meetings, I attended three of them. I don't know if anybody was there from the commission. That would have been a perfect, two of them were public. Were you there or not?
Jerry Woodpey is not here to respond to these comments.
Okay, I'm just going through what I'm, I've been the liaison too, though, so I know what's going on. Tractor trailers still, a couple of weeks ago, out of town hall, had a hazmat cleanup. Somebody should have reached out to the fire, the firemen and seen what was in.
They're told not to meet, though. Just remember that. And we haven't showed up the last five meetings.
We've been dissolved before the law has been amended, remember?
But you were still meeting, though.
And you took care of the pollution on another mountain.
In the parking lot.
Let me speak, just more else to speak. Modern put up screening poles, and they wanted to put up an odorizing mist. And we put a stop to that because there's no way you're going to put some type of chemical spray over Modern, the mask, the smell of the dump, and that would stop immediately. Do we have a natural resource inventory? I'm just reading what you people say you have. Do we have, I mean, do we know what springs and trees, what type of resources here? I don't, I'm just asking this. What environmental threats are you investigating in the community? That's basically, you know, C W M is going to be, I hope, closing. I hope someone's following that. But these are decisions that you say you're following, and I just cannot see in it. That's all. That's what I'm trying to say here.
But you didn't come to all the meetings. I wish, I wish you would have.
Mr. Guyven and I split a lot of the times.
Okay. Many of the meetings took place without a liaison from the board there, inexplicably.
But no meeting minutes.
As Zach pointed out, we stopped receiving materials. It makes it harder to function when there's no symbiotic relationship with the rest of the town.
Somebody should see Mr. Masters.
When a picture was painted of all the great things the environmental commission is doing, we haven't received a year-end update since two thousand and thirteen. There hasn't been a single update since two thousand and thirteen, and that's supposed to be required. So again, I, I didn't come on board until two thousand and sixteen. I went back to two thousand and thirteen to look at the year-end reports. They were just twelve agendas stapled together.
I can't answer for prior political leadership.
So again, we're trying to make it better, okay?
Why throw the baby out with the bathwater? How does that make it better?
Well, it makes it better to take, and I don't want to go back and forth, because like I said, we're going to continue to have meetings, and we'll leave this public hearing open. But we're, we're going to make it better by having a subcommittee within the, um, the, um, planning board of environmental experts, that are more experts than are on the current environmental commission. I mean, there's, there's, there's one expert right now in the environmental commission.
Are they going to launch investigations?
Well.
You've got a PhD, you've got an attorney on the environmental commission.
Yeah, the PhDs are on the planning board as well.
Uh-huh.
Okay, so.
Which is not going to have the same focus as the statutory focus of this environmental commission that you're disbanded.
But, but, but that hasn't been done.
What hasn't been?
The things, the statutory has.
Let's have that conversation before you throw the baby out.
Well, right now, we're going to, like I said, we'll leave the, the, um, the public hearing open, and we'll continue on for the night. But we're going to leave it open. Like I said, this is a, um, a work in progress, and we'll start our next meeting with the open public hearing for the same town.
Mr. Supervisor?
Yeah.
Let's see what they.
Yep, sure.
I kind of want to step in and defend Zach, because Zach had a very serious health problem in the last couple of years, very serious. And did Yonin's job coming back, but he really was, uh, literally a death store. I think, you know, maybe if he slipped a little bit in his aggressive, mainly that the environmental issue was completely understated. And then after me, also suffering from Jerry Woodpey's dummies, it's, it's really been disrupted. I'm not taking a particular side, it sounds like I am, I do want to, I do want you to know that, you know, we're looking at all aspects of it. And if anyone out there wants to hang Zach Collister, he's not the guy you're waiting for.
And I got nothing but respect for Zach. I'm just saying. Yeah, this is fine. Guys, this is not, I'm not personally tacking anybody, okay? I understand myself as a bull. It's factual. Rob, yes. Again, can't talk to past administration or the way it's been governed by Tom and the liaison that you're, I've been on it many years, so. You're almost kind of falling to complacency with how projects are. And environments, I agree, go back with, you know? Things became just reviews of one last subdivision. So what's not known, and what we're trying to do this year, with the, the organization, Mark Gell is an acreas and fresh act, absolute expert of situations involving the town. He's got the education to back them. We have, one of our sessions, when I became chairman late last year after Jerry's passing, I was secretary too, by the way, so I, I'm spending my, I run three companies for a living, three, three corporations for a living. And then I got to do all this, I got to take up all the minutes for our meetings alone, our agendas. I email them to Donna when I can. But we've reviewed our code. We've been trying to meet and go over these things. Mark's had several experts lined up. We've been working with the Buffalo Niagara waterkeeper. So I understand our past hasn't been that, that great. But there's a lot of things going on that I'm not saying. But there's a lot of things going on that I'm not saying is decision. Like the thought process behind the decision is fine and dandy. But I think the stakeholders, or at least the commission needs to have a meeting behind closed doors. And then make sure it's not just review and reactive, that's reactive of new law, it's reactive if you read it. Even had A I data analytics analyzing too. And if you put some adverbials that empowers the planning and environmental board, pick the word review right out of it because it should be proactive board for our community. That's what I'm getting at here. That's all I want to say. I expect everybody to not attack on our performance. It's just before decisions made, I just want everybody to be logical and all stakeholders back to table.
And Zach, I will gladly invite you to the meeting that Mark said he would volunteer to come and talk about it. I have no, I have no issue. Obviously, we can have a couple of commissioners on there. We can only have two board members. So Sarah Lecter has decided to volunteer, myself, Tim Masters nailed backs. We had one meeting already, okay? So this is a working document. So we're going to go from there. So I would gladly invite you as well.
Thank you.
Tim, go ahead.
Just one quick thing, civic master mentioned that there'd be a presence of the engineer and a lawyer and his presence at the meetings. I don't see the benefit of having three town employees that answer to this board attend the meetings. I mean, the strength is having individual residents and people that have a passion for the Environmental Commission. That's what gives it strength. I had a problem with having three.
Talk about the planning board, they attend the planning board. They're not on the planning board. They're not on the board.
But Tim was talking that they'll have an attorney and the engineer present if the shift is made.
They're always present, they're always present.
Yeah, at the meeting, they're at the meeting.
I'm talking about planning board, I'm saying.
That's what he was talking about.
He said when the Environmental Commission, if it became part of the planning board, like they're planning to do, that they have some kind of benefit of having three town employees attended. I don't see the benefit there.
Because they're already there for the planning board if they're.
Yeah, I'm not talking about.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to end that and we're going to, we're going to move on. So we're going to leave the public hearing open. We need the agenda approval. Does anybody have an amendment for the agenda?
I'm muted and I'd like to be calling some stuff.
Oh, agenda, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm going to take, I'm going to, the roof replacement, the water pollution control center, I'm going to take that off. I should, I have one under the chief private's agenda.
Okay, that would be under Councilman Jacoby or under legal?
Oh, it really is an issue for chief in his, in his position, chief is go around with department.
Okay.
So we could just, we could address it right there and be relatively quick.
Okay. No, I don't know what, yeah, I don't know. Okay, so I got approval, the agenda has amended. Favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Before we go to the other comments, the Niagara Military Affairs Council is here for a presentation right quick. And then we'll go back to resident comments. Thank you.
I would thank you for letting me follow a social life topic tonight.
Yeah.
My name is Wayne Zimmerman, I'm the Niagara Military Affairs Council, I'm the vice chairman. I just moved, been my own story, I was born and raised in the Falls. Joined the Air Force, did five years active duty in the Pope Air Force Base, North Carolina. And then I came back to Niagara Falls and served about twenty-eight years out at Niagara Falls Air Reserve Station. And I retired in twenty twenty as the operation group superintendent, chief commander. And since then, I've been on the Niagara Military Affairs Council. So it's a personal thing for me, that, just to share a little information about me. I try to keep it a little short and I've only got about a hundred slides to go through, so. You've got a mission statement and our actions statement that are basically just to say that we're here to support the growth and prosperity of the airbase in such and act as liaisons to all the players involved, whether it be federal, state, local level. On our next slide there shows what I mentioned there. You know, we're here for the growth and prosperity and the positive economic impact the base provides for this community. It is the largest employer in Niagara County, which I wish it wasn't, I wish we had more business here, that would get larger, but that's how it is right now. And our next slide about remembering the past, we've been around since the first crack mission almost affected the base back in nineteen ninety-five. And that's when N I M A C was constructed. And through the timeline, you can see some of the actions that we've helped negotiate for the base, to help put a positive spin on things when they could have gone very bad very quickly for the base. And through all that, we've come out very strong on this end where we are today. As I mentioned in the present, you can see the photo there, we have three hundred, three thousand families that are affected that work at the base that are impacted by it. You might recognize the guy in that picture, that's my picture, that's my final flight with the Air Force Air Two and my family. And, you know, we're involved with the business community, supporting education and training benefits for the members that work and income opportunities. And we've also helped to support things like the Niagara Falls International Airport. The new terminal likely wouldn't be there if it hadn't been the strength of the Air Reserve Station being there. As far as our annual economic impact, the numbers I have on here, we have a hundred million dollar P R O L and two hundred million dollars in operating expenses for a total of about three hundred million dollars of annual impact. Those numbers are actually fairly full. We just recently got some funding from the state that's going to allow us to get a new economic impact study, which I'm sure this number is going to go up significantly. So recent investments that we've had, there was fifty million dollars for the nine fourteen air refueling link when we converted from the C one thirty mission to the tanker mission that we currently have. At the time, we realized that the Air Force wasn't interested in the legacy aircraft we had, the C one thirties, but refueling was very big and it was a smart move to move towards that. And that has a lot of growth potential for us as well, with the new tankers that they're developing right now. And then a two hundred million dollar investment of the one oh seven attack wing is they convert to their mission of flying unmanned aerial vehicles. They have a very strong mission with a great potential for future investment. So this just continues the billions of dollars in continual federal investment. And that's something that I like to, to hammer home, this is federal donors coming for local community too. It's not, we're not asking Albany, because we know how difficult that is to get money from that, but the federal government, it's a lot of money coming in here. As I mentioned, we're the information brokers on behalf of Niagara Falls Air Reserve Station, whether it be Albany, county level, local level, Washington. We make regular visits to all of those, our elected officials, as well as to our military leaders to help focus their attention on Niagara Falls and the importance of it and the local community. We do that through building relationships, we can see some of our photos, some of our recent visits. We also had a civic leaders tour, who was about Colorado Springs, just last, actually it was August. We got to visit the Air Force Academy and do some other things out there. It was a great trip, a great opportunity for some local business leaders to understand a little bit more about what we do. And we're always planning for the future. The tanker mission is constantly evolving, there's new tankers in development, we're hoping to get in on that. The tanks we do have are pretty old, the oldest of them were built nineteen fifty-seven and the newest were built nineteen sixty-three. So let's think about that with one more head. But they do a fantastic job of keeping these planes flying and they do wonderful things. We're hoping to get funding to improve the runway of the base. Currently, the current taxiways aren't long enough for the tanker mission to actually take off fully loaded. So we're hoping to get those extended, that's about a sixty million dollar project that we're hoping to bring here. And so, yeah, we just want to support N I M A C. Obviously, the mission that we do is supporting the local economy through the base. We have a six hundred and one return on the investment, we're all volunteers, creates, and I think that impacted direct benefits to this community. So I just want to say thank you for always coming to you and telling you about N I M A C and the base. Are there any questions?
The only thing I could say is thank you for your service. And the town of Lewiston is extremely happy to continue supporting N I M A C. I was able to fly out to California on those trips and see the drones out there being, actually see the drones. As many people don't realize, the drones are flown out of Niagara Falls, but they're never in Niagara Falls. Are they ever in Niagara Falls?
We have had them land there and there are some, they're hoping to get that done where they can actually do them. It's a totally automated system where it lands and takes off from the base. But right now, actually a lot of them are overseas, so that's why they're here. They're doing a mission twenty-four sevens.
We thank you and we look forward to continuing to support N I M A C and, you know, hopefully the airbase thrives and continues to do so. So thank you. So resident statements, Amy Elguino, I hope I pronounced her name correctly.
Hi, sure.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Amy Elguino, I'm a new resident of Lewiston. I was born in St. Mary's and graduated, we've read, left about forty years. And one of the reason I'm here is that in June, my house backed up with sewer, sewage. And my parents, the vets, oh, now also their house backed up with sewage. So now I am part of the group of citizens that is working on flooding and sewage backups in our resident spaces. So first of all, definitely wanted to thank you for answering our questions, of course we have more. One of the things is money was put toward the backflow preventors. And while that sounds in theory like a good idea, people are getting them. People, including my mother, who had twenty thousand dollars worth of tannage in her basement are getting them because once you close your sewage, your, the backflow preventer gets closed for twenty-four to forty-eight hours. So you can't use, you can't take a shower, you can't flush, you can't do a lot of things. So you've created like an interior sewage issue while you're trying to keep exterior sewage out. So, you know, it, it doesn't work for a lot of our residents. Now, what we understand is that the hundred thousand dollars was money that was allocated by the town for this. And we had a suggestion on some low hanging fruit that we would like you to think about. Approach?
Yep.
So as you know, there's a lot of problems in Morgan Farms. One of the things that we've noted in Morgan Farms is we have storm sewer breaks which are quite above grade. So that the water would actually have to, you know, go up and into it rather than down. There are five of these in Morgan Farms. And what we suggest is that, I don't know what department could do it, but lowering those so that they're below grade, so that water would flow into them. We would like to see that done before the end of the year. We think it's very feasible, we think it can be done with town staff. And we think it would be a good way to address the street flooding, which, you know, is part of the problem in, and that will lie there. So that's, that's something we'd like, we'd like to find out about and hope that we can get a good report back from them. Another question we had is how much is in the budget for next year for cleaning sewers and shore sewers in the town? And how much money is there currently allocated for lining the sewers? We understand that this is the time when budgets are made, so we'd like to make sure that you are thinking about the fact that January, April, and June of this year, we had a lot of people that were impacted by floodwater or sewage backup. And we need to proactively be working on that. And then the last thing that we wondered is, do these storm drains get cleaned periodically, regularly? Is there a schedule for a different neighborhood? I know that the sanitary sewers have a regular schedule for cleaning them and cleaning them, correct? But is there anything like that for storm sewers? So those are a couple of questions we have and we're hoping that, that you can look into them and that, you know, we can start working together, starting with the low hanging fruit. And we'll start looking in other neighborhoods for obvious things like storm drains that obviously don't take in any storm water. And, and then we'll work on the harder, more expensive stuff together. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Davis.
Good evening, thank you for letting me address Com Council. My name is Andrew Davis, my wife and I reside at fifty-three hundred Town Line Road, Sandmore, we've been there for forty-five years. My in-laws have been at fifty-three thirty Town Line Road for sixty years. The new residents of fifty-three sixty-eight Town Line Road have no respect for the town's zoning ordinance. They're operating three businesses on rural residential zone property. West of your Property Kings LLC, Niagara Nightmares LLC, Niagara Pumpkin Farm LLC. The current residents have used their fourteen acre agriculture real estate and they've used over half of it and have installed an amusement park. It's disguised as a working farm pretending to be agritourism. Instead of inviting the public to learn about agriculture and farming, they're showing people how to destroy farmland, polluting the ground with oil tar, asphalt pilings from road grindings. They are polluting the air by burning construction debris. They are disturbing the wildlife with noise pollution, fireworks, bowhorns, loudspeakers, chainsaws during their Halloween haunts. This parcel of land has not been a working farm for over sixty years. Running amusement parks, Halloween attractions, construction businesses should be operated on commercially zoned parcels. When done illegally on rural residential properties, there's no site plan submitted, there's no building permits, there's no child safety laws, there's no sanitation code, there's no food preparation inspections, none of this is followed. Is the town of Lewiston, their liability insurance going to cover a lawsuit if, God forbid, a child suffers a catastrophic spinal cord injury falling off one of these rides? I sure hope not because even a traveling carnival is required to pass safety inspections. Most intelligent city folk who are new to agriculture and farming get educated first. They learn crop rotations, they learn about soil fertilization, the hydrology of the land. The current owners lease their farmland to local farmers. The owners then spend that money attending scare conventions, purchasing Halloween props, twelve foot high skeletons, fake caskets. They hire scare actors, they build wooden wagons for hayrides, they install fake barns, fake general stores, fake filling stations, they install ticket booths, refreshment stands, and that is all planted on their cropland. The fifty-three hundred block of Town Line Road used to be quiet, healthy, friendly rural residential property. Our quality of life has been allowed to be destroyed and is currently continued to be degraded by the operation of these business entities. Please shut them down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Bethany Elias.
Good evening, folks. My name is Bethany Elias and I am on the committee for hoping to alleviate some of the flooding and the sewage problems in and around the town of Lewiston, as well as the village of Lewiston. I know I've asked this before and I got to flat out know that the residents should take responsibility for the ongoing flooding and sewage problems. The no came from, would there be funding that would reimburse residents for damages if they're able to give you the proof that you would accept that they actually lost? As you heard Amy saying, her parents lost up to twenty thousand dollars in damages. Um, I know we filed a claim just looking for our reimbursement from our insurance, our, uh, our deductible, thank you, for our insurance. That's all we were looking for, even though it was over eight thousand dollars in damages that we sustained. There was a gentleman on, um, Upper Mountain, ten thousands of dollars more than once. Uh, I know you're putting money from one account to fund the backflow preventers, which I doubt a lot of people are going to be going for. Maybe some of that money could be used. I don't think there's a whole lot of people that would be able to claim other than deductibles, because a lot of people did put it through insurances. I have seen and talked to people that were at their wits' end. I can't just let this go. You didn't talk to these poor folks. They're not able to sustain these damages. They've given up on fixing their basements. My husband and I said, "No, we're done. We can't do it anymore." And that's what I'm seeing with some of these other folks. They, and they don't have the funds that my husband and I have to do it. They just don't have it. I would like to see something given to the folks that have caught, had this much damage caused. And you can say that it's nature's way. It isn't. Jeff, you even said it is the responsibility of the cracked sewers, the water, the storm water is getting into the cracked sewer lines. If that's happening, that's not the residents' problems. That is the towns and the sewer districts. So I will keep asking until I get a, get an answer other than no. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Elias?
Hello, everybody. Mark Elias, Morgan Drive. Uh, I attended a meeting a couple of months ago, and, uh, my question to the board was, I would like to answer from each individual board member on instituting moratorium on building until this water sewer drought is resolved. And I would like to know if each, everyone's answer is at this point.
At this time, I'm not prepared to do a moratorium on the building.
Okay, I, I ask for answer from each, each individual.
Okay.
Let me start with them.
Me?
Yeah.
Um, no, I'm not for a moratorium. After tour, uh, touring the wastewater treatment plant, we have a capability, from what I understand, to actually be able to double what we currently have as far as residents and houses here in the town of Lewiston. So our system can handle that type of influx, so no. I would go for a moratorium.
Like, uh, Mark, I think there was just a lot of rain at one time. That there's, we're not the only community that this happened to. There's every community we feel in Town Niagara. It was just a lot of rain. No, I'm not ready yet to put a moratorium on it, and... I mean, actions we're doing now, real quick, I'll just touch. The sewer is sewer-jutting all the town sewer lines. We have a half a million dollar sewer truck. It couldn't come at a better time. And Jeff has it out four or five days a week, sewer-jutting highways, bottling it. They're, uh, they're jutting the storm sewers. Any thing, any blockages? We got a camera, I think you might have seen, yeah, we got a camera that goes in the drain. We see what's plugged. Actually, the, um, one, um, discardment is plugged. We used it there. Um, highway's been cleaning ditches. We aspire to more road, I mean, you can see drive around. We, we walked apart, we're looking at ditches, some of them are stable, not maintained. And, uh, that's, that's an issue we gotta try and deal with, why they're not maintaining their drainage. Highway's installing a new pipe that started today, going down to, uh, Morgans, right in Morgans. We'll alert tomorrow. You see a massive backlog out there. Um, we have meetings regularly with sewer, highway, building inspector, our town engineer, and continued actions that will be completed. I mean, it's, I'm hoping we don't get another hundred-year storm, but if, if there's a chance, we could soon. Um, and like I said, little action from the state in the ditches, so we're not just sitting, you know, kicking a can down the road. We are working.
But if I might add, this is helpful, the pictures, so thank you very much. Because it is very hard to get water into something that's elevated.
There are actually seven of them.
Yes, so those are the things that, once we become aware, then we can address them through highway. And that's something that I think would absolutely help the drainage issue, not so much putting a moratorium on building. Because we really have the capability, so.
So, uh, let's continue now, now, Steve, you said no.
You know, if you're a homeowner like I am, man, um, it'd be wonderful if you would come up with a solution and said, "Here's the evidence that if we put a moratorium on it, that's gonna solve the problem," or have a major impact on the problem. And I'm not convinced that it would. And, uh, Sarah points out that our sewage, uh, facility can handle far more than handling now. So it's really, it's a solution that won't work and won't help. And, uh, you know, if you're a, if you're a property owner or a developer and you have been working towards building homes that you're likely, or it's a house that you wanna live in, for us to go and say, "No, you can't build it because we got an idea it might help the sewage problem," if you came up to me and said, "Here's the evidence," and we'd be like, "Oh." And I'd say, "Let's go for it."
I got it.
Okay. My thought process is, the, the more we build, the more we're putting it into the system, and yes, okay, it can handle doubling, said Sarah. However, we don't have a once-in-a-hundred-year storm every, I mean, three times a year. So something's going on. So my thought process was, let's do this moratorium until we can figure out, get through all these cleaning of ditches, go through a season, and see if we solve the flooding issue.
Well, the pipe that they're working on, on Morgan, uh, it's gonna run it into the river. It was collapsed, and it should have a major impact. Looks all the whole time.
Oh, that was collapsed?
It was, yeah.
Was it collapsed?
It was.
Yeah, collapsed?
That's probably what we're.
No, that's storm water.
That's storm, that's storm water.
The pipe that's going over the river by Morgan's, right now, we camered it. It was put in eleven years ago. It actually rotted and collapsed the pipe, so water can't get through that thirty-six-inch pipe. We found that out. The only reason why we found it is because the resident next door called and said, "Water's flooding out." We went there and looked at it. It's totally collapsed now, so we're gonna start here. As long as the weather doesn't stop, it's down over the bank. We got the machine there today. We moved it in, so we'll be starting that here for the next couple of days to start fixing that. But that, that takes ninety percent of the water from Morgan's comes out that drain. And nobody knew it was there because they did it eleven years ago, and it failed. Why that pipe rotted, we can't figure it out.
Okay, well, thank you for...
Yeah, and then we found another problem that, in the catch basin, we seen water running when we had a big storm. And we went in there, and somehow Blacktop got down in there, in the catch basin, we didn't know, and it plugged up a twelve-inch pipe. It was only six inches, so we cleaned that all out, which that was over Morgan's too. And I know the line from Dutton is all new. We did that fifteen years ago, and now from Dutton up Fifth, and it comes, starts down your subdivision, and that's the first big grate there, which, I don't know if you're talking about the ones that are a little bit higher. But like I said, give me your addresses. Stop it tomorrow. Look, see which ones are higher.
Is there any other positive things you can tell us that, so we know what's going on?
Uh, we'll keep at it.
You're gonna keep finding the ditches?
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Rhea Geibin?
My name is Rhea Geibin. I live at Fort Twenty-O, Manchester. And recently, I have recently found out that, um, Amy is being considered, Amy Smith, is being considered for the town clerk position. And if I may, I'd like to give a recommendation for Amy. I've known Amy for several years. I've worked with Amy for several years at American University. I have since retired, and Amy came down and took the town board. I have seen Amy develop into a competent, confident professional. And I could speak to you about her skills, but you all know her skills. You know her talents. I'd like to speak to you about Amy's personality, her interpersonal skills. I can't tell you how many times during the day we would hear Amy's name being called. "Amy, can you help us with this?" "Amy, my computer's not working." "Amy, Amy, Amy." And she was always there for us. She was the glue of our department. But Amy was always very diplomatic at the same time. If she had something going, she'd say, "You know, no, I can't help you right now, but let's get together at two o'clock." Well, that, that's diplomacy. You know, she didn't put us, you know, tell us to go sit down and find something else to do. She, you know, she had a solution for us, always. So you put that together. You take her skills, you take her education, her experience, her background, and her interpersonal skills. You will not find a stronger candidate. I cannot highly recommend Amy any higher than this. Amy is probably the best candidate for that position. Thank you.
Thank you. Rhea Geibin?
Short and sweet. I have the pleasure of working with Amy for the last eight years, but I was on the town board. I found her to be very dedicated to her position, very proactive and very cooperative and helpful on all aspects. I think she'd make an excellent town clerk.
Thank you, Beth. Margie Stromback? Hope I pronounced that right?
That's right. Hi, I'm Margie Wamsley Stromback. Um, I live at Morgan Drive. And when I was here in July, we, um, I asked a question. And so I just would like some clarification, um, for the answer that was provided. So I'm gonna read the question again, just to, for context, um, and the answer that we received from Jeff Brinder. So, the question was, "You receive money for the I and I plan for each development, and we have had a lot. Much has been received in the past five years, and what has it been used for?" So the answer, uh, that we got was, "We do not have a lot of money from new developments to perform miracles in the collection system. What we have from those particular funds are able to be spent on private property because they don't come from tax or user fees. Most inflow and infiltration problems in the sewer system are from private property. Town forces do not work on private property. This money will be for A clamp installation on private property." So first question was, "I've, I've tried to do due diligence to find what an A clamp was, and I don't know." Like, I only was related to scuba, which I don't think we're going scuba diving. So, um, can you clarify what an A clamp is and why people might need it?
Have, have you seen some residents that have, um, PDC that sticks up out of their front yards?
Yeah.
Right, that's a clean-out ore effect, okay? And what that does is it goes down and it, it hits your sewer lateral that takes your sewage out to the main line.
Okay?
Okay? When you have, um, ground that freezes, thaws, it grabs a hold of that pipe, and eventually it will pull it out of the, uh, the sewer lateral, okay? Now, what that does is effectively, it starts to drain your whole yard into, um, the sewer system.
Okay?
Okay? So now you've got all the rainwater that falls on, in somebody's front lawn. It's all making its way down in the sewer system. Okay? And we just can't go tell somebody. First off, we just can't walk on somebody's property and tell them what they need to do. So, um, and what an A clamp does is we dig down there where that connection is made, and this is a metal clamp. It clamps onto the bed stack and the sewer lateral, so they cannot be pulled out. That's what an A clamp is.
Okay. Um...
There are certain neighborhoods above the hill, um, that even if the town forces do, and we use the money that we have just for A clamps, okay? That work would all be done above the hill, because there is some bad situations on private property that, that need to be fixed up there.
So are you gonna be notifying people that this is what they need?
Well, we have to, yes. Twenty twenty-five, we'll take a stab at one on private property.
Okay. Um, I also was a little confused because it said the money is spent on private property, but then it's not because the town doesn't work on private property.
If they can, the town is not supposed to work on private property. Now, if you have an A clamp that you need installed in your house, the only way we are, we can find that out is at the time of house sale. Okay? When we do an inspection, then the homeowner is required to fix it with their own money before they can sell their house. Okay? Well, what we're doing is, because we have such of these, these I and I issues, is that we were, we're gonna try and fix some of them with the money that you were just talking about that comes from developments.
Thank you for clarifying. Um, I do appreciate your, your time and all the efforts that have been done. I mean, I've seen the trucks. I walked the neighborhood. I saw you when you were looking at the, what failed, um, on Morgan. So, um, we will hopefully continue to work together because we'd like a solution, um, and hopefully no more flooding and sewer, sewer gin in the basement.
Thank you. Okay, moving, uh, the approv, approval of the...
I'm sorry. I, I know I didn't sign up to speak, but I'd love to rephrase the word.
Yes.
My name is Donna Gelfinkel. I am the present town clerk, and I didn't realize that we were allowed to do what the Geibins just did. But, um, as a town clerk, I would, again, like to encourage you to appoint Tamara Burns as the acting town clerk, because she has ten years' experience and knows the job. Amy is great with computers. That's not what the town clerk does. I also would like to say that everybody makes mistakes. And sometimes they just need to be put aside and let the person grow, which is what she has done. Again, I encourage you and ask you to appoint Tamara Burns as the acting town clerk.
Thank you, Donna. Um, approval of the meeting minutes from the work session on September ninth? Do you have a motion approved?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Abstract of claims, counsel memorial. See, first I'd like to do an amendment. I last, two weeks ago on the ninety-nine abstract of claims, there was a typo. So I wanna recommend an amendment of forty thousand dollars, so it would be three hundred seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-one cents for the regular abstract of claims from ninety-nine, two thousand and twenty-four, which is an additional forty thousand. A second then? There's a motion in the second. On favor?
Aye.
Suppose? Motion. And then, nine twenty-three, twenty-four, I move to approve the regular abstract of claims, number two-four dash zero-two-four-three-oh through two-four dash zero-two-five-five-six, and recommend payment the amount of two hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and six dollars and eighty-four cents plus a post dollar of ten thousand, thirty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Second.
For the motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, department heads, do you, Pam, anything from the clerk's office?
I have the water, we're looking, I was gonna read off for the water department. Um, and requesting approval to place the unpaid water in sewer towns for the town of Lewiston out of twenty-twenty-five town tax to break down the water sewer as it travels. Water is eighty-four thousand, fourteen dollars and ninety-three cents. Master sewer is forty-three thousand, seven hundred thirty-five dollars and eighty cents. Self sewer is seven thousand, forty-three dollars and thirty-two cents. And then, then there's the hundred-dollar town charge for twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars, for a total of a hundred sixty-four thousand, six hundred twenty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. And a complete listing of those who are unpaid is on file in my office.
Um, we need a motion to put it on the tax notice.
I think, yeah, motion.
A motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Supervisor, you should also have the grass cutting also?
I don't.
Okay.
Uh, oh, well, I didn't say that. All right. For the grass cutting law, I have had twenty-one parcels in the town cut. The total fee for grass cutting is ten thousand, five hundred and six dollars and twenty-five cents. There's also a hundred dollar restriction fee per parcel, and a total of four thousand, one hundred dollars, with a grand total of fourteen thousand, six hundred, six dollars and twenty-five cents. And what next? Do you want, do you want that, put on the tax rules?
Yes.
Or a motion?
Second motion. Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. We also want to address, well, okay, we'll get over my, my department. Chief, Department head statements?
We've got a issue with property. I've heard of Mr. Beck, who's been working with them, I think.
Yes, sir. Mr. Supervisor, as, as the town board may be aware, you may not be, several months ago, um, Chief, and some of his staff came to me with some, um, property that was held by them. It was previously confiscated for one reason or another. We got rid of some bikes, et cetera. One of the issues that he had was that there was, uh, a number of casino chips, and I believe these were older casino chips. The, the, uh, staff member had tried to call the local casino to return them in, only to find out that they would not accept them, and they had to be driven down to Salamanca. The amount of casino chips had issued, I believe, was between two and three hundred dollars, and it wouldn't be viable for, uh, the town to take one of his employees and have him driven all the way down and catch him on it, uh, for a couple of hours. That being said, um, I spoke with the Association of Towns, and they indicated that the best way to do it is just to place it on options international. So I'm asking the chief today, under his agenda, to, to make a motion, or to ask the Board for a mo, uh, the Board, so, the Board for a motion to, uh, to clear leases access and authorize the chief to put them on options international. I would suggest giving fifty percent of the value to start with, and then see what they get driven up to.
Um, we can motion, second. Motion in second, any questions?
Interesting, uh, dilemma.
No one has ever seen it before at the state, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's legal, it's legal.
Took about a month for me to get an answer.
It, it's legal to sell the chips, right?
It, it, well, it, 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 we are maximizing the financial benefit to the town in a way we're handling it.
Oh, no, I just thought, make sure that, because it's just such an odd request that I, I guess.
So we have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Anything else, Chief? Nothing? Uh, Tim, anything else?
I got two more things. Uh, I think what Mr. Henderson was trying to insinuate was because myself and the town engineer and the town attorney are at the meeting, and we're paid by you all, that we would be hesitant in speaking up for the environment. But I could tell you, you all know me, that couldn't be further from the truth, and that every boarding commission is appointed by the town board and receives a stipend, stipend from the town board. And if people truly knew us well, we, we speak up, so, um, just wanted to clarify that. And also for the residents on Morgan Farms, I did have a resident come in and apply for the backflow preventer application today. It was art, and they, she's already had it installed, and, um, I understand what the one person was talking about, about, yeah, if that's closed, our bathroom sink is not gonna work, but do you want to incur twenty thousand dollars of damage to your basement? Or do you want to install the backflow preventer as a temporary stopgap until this other stuff can get resolved?
But let me ask you, Tamara, isn't there another, um, extra you can do with a backflow preventer that you can still shower, use the bathroom, is it like a grinder pump?
Yeah, if you put in a sewer ejector pump in your basement, then it goes out and has a built-in backflow preventer, and it can only go out under pressure and nothing could ever come in. That would be one hundred percent foolproof, but it costs more money than a backflow preventer flapper valve. And that, the, the person that was in today put in the flapper valve, it was under her, her floor, so she had every concrete taken out. And then she also had them put in the gate valve, uh, on, on the side, other side of that, so when she goes on vacation, she can shut that gate valve, and there's no possible way that her basement can flood. Now, if we have a bad rain, yep, until that water subsides in that sanitary lateral, you're not gonna be able to, you know, you have a certain amount of capacity. But it, it was no different than when I lived in Wheatfield, I had a grinder pump in the sewer, and, you know, if the power went out or, or whatever, I, I knew I had a forty gallon capacity until, you know, my pump got replaced or, or the power went back on, and it's, it, then it was the way it was. So, it's not just me to the town of Lewiston.
Right. Jackie, you're on the agenda. Got any supervisor answers?
Nothing.
Name, Zaino, anything?
Nothing.
Jeff, anything more?
Well, I would just like to add, there wasn't a wastewater treatment plant in Western New York that did not have flooding issues on those two dates. There wasn't, there's many, 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 many people who have their basements flooded. It's something we don't take lightly, and we're always gonna be worried about.
Can I ask a question? Quick, that truck that we got to, to, to bring, the one, that was ordered sometime before this problem, right?
Um, almost two years.
Yeah, so, you know, they, they've been aware of this for a long time, and they're always trying to get the, the solution, but it takes that long to get a truck. If they hadn't been thinking ahead-
The, the thing about the truck is, it cleans the sewer, okay? The sewer, it, being backed up due to any kind of stuff that was in it, it wasn't, is not our problem. Okay? Our problem was just massive amounts of water.
I just wanted to point out that you're not sitting over there saying, eh, there's no rain today, we won't worry about it.
Well, our truck only is gonna make this, this last, uh, entry into the, uh, beach festival parade, it will not be in any-
Okay, Jeff Cosgrove?
Yeah, we're like-
Resigning this, or is Jackie? I'll let Jackie do it.
Um, we wanna buy that SciTech GPS units for our machines, so that's gonna help us keep it, keep a record on a ditch that we clean, make it faster to clean, and that price there is the only company that makes it for the machines we have at the highway garage, that's why we wanted that one.
So explain real quick what it does.
What it does?
Explain it to me.
Let's say you've got two points on a ditch, so you can go down to one end with that, with the machine, you put your tooth on the invert of the pipe, walk the machine back to the other end, basically, this is the gist of it. Put the tooth on the other invert, you've got a screen inside your machine, you hit the screen, it automatically calculates the pitch and everything, and basically, basically it takes the oper, operator away from everything, because now it automatically does, so it only let you dig so deep, so that ditch is perfectly shaped and cupped when it's done.
Which will help-
Yeah, and then, and then too, we can go out in the wintertime or when the weather's not bad, you can't clean them. We can go out, we go out, stick different ditches and save it on the computer, then all we gotta do is I give it to a guy, say, take this mach, put it in the machine, and it's already set up for the grade and everything, so you can clean a lot faster. Roadside, off-road.
You need a motion to purchase this machine from SciTech?
Yes.
Um, in the amount of seventy-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, sixty-seven cents, and this was a state bid, correct?
Yes, that's the only one that makes it.
Okay.
And it'll fit on three of our machines.
Okay. And, and, did you have a chance to look this over?
I haven't, but, but my, my thought would be, it sounds to me like it's the only one that works with that particular-
Yes.
Piece of equipment, so it's a sole source.
Yeah, okay.
So, I think you guys got, I think I made cop, or somebody made cops give to you guys before, okay?
Yeah. So, uh, we need a motion to purchase this machine from SciTech, um, for the amount of seventy-two thousand, two hundred and sixty thousand, sixty-seven cents from?
H ninety-seven?
H ninety-seven.
All right.
Uh, second. All, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried. Um, Melinda Olin?
Hello, I'm in China.
Okay. Uh, Tim Smith, you're still hiding back there?
Yeah, still hiding back there, go Bills, right? Uh, you've got a lot of stuff going on, uh, make it real quick, Grass is Thursday at the Senior Center, six to seven-thirty. We have our Fall Bingo coming up at the Senior Center as well, Truck Retreat, uh, end of October twenty-sixth, please join us for that. Our last, uh, time for outdoor yoga is this Saturday at ten o'clock, there will be movement indoors at the Senior Center as well. Uh, and a big one is, we've got twenty-five community skates for NU. Last year it's seventeen, we had twelve sponsors. We coordinate with NU, uh, if we get sponsors, which we had a ton of local businesses, uh, join in, which we had twelve of them, our town Lewiston residents skate for free. So, uh, if anybody's willing or wants or knows anybody that's interested in, uh, sponsoring one of these skate, uh, events, uh, please contact me here anytime. Uh, would love to talk to you, and all our events are family-friendly, ages zero to ninety, please, join us, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Um, I believe that everybody, old business- Oh, Margie, oh, go ahead, Mrs. Maggert.
I was wondering how long you were gonna take before you looked up?
Well, you don't always wanna speak.
I know, well, I, I'll speak today. But I gotta do it fast because Bill's on. Okay, I just wanna bring you all up to date. Um, our nation will be celebrating the two hundred and fifty-year anniversary in two thousand and twenty-six. We have a committee, and we'll have a committee meetings, we've had three so far this year. Um, last week, we had one. Bob Emerson is the director of the Old Port Niagara, and he is the leader of the committee. So, we have a new website. If you wanna write this down, it is established for Niagara County. It's niagarausa250@gmail.com. They're also going to be, uh, having another one, which would be niagarausa250.org, um, for suggestion, ideas, and other areas of concern. It will be a forum type of thing. Uh, we have, um, a year and a quarter left before two thousand and twenty-six. It's not a lot of time. And somebody was talking at the committee that it takes about a year and a half to get fireworks on board at different places. And, so it doesn't leave us a lot of time. But Niagara County is orchestrating this group, as is every other county in Ni, in New York. So, and that goes, I guess, throughout the United States. Um, this forum in the other, um, website is going to be asking for suggestions and ideas on how to make money to sponsor the ideas and suggestions that we all have to bring the celebrations on. So, again, we need to get that idea and all those other things together in a year and a quarter, which doesn't leave us much time. But if anybody has any questions or anything, just see me, okay?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Maggert. Uh, old pending business, I don't believe there's any, there's no new business. Um, my liaison report, um, we failed at the beginning of the year to realize that Monday, October fourteenth, which would be our work session, is Columbus Day, so the town hall is closed that day, so there'd be no work session. So, we need a motion to change the work session to Thursday, October seventeenth at five-thirty PM. The reason we have to do it at five-thirty PM is because we're also gonna be moving the planning board to seven PM. So I need a motion first to schedule the work session for Thursday, October seventeenth at five-thirty PM. You wanna make that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Now we need to set the planning board meeting, um, October seventeenth at seven PM.
No motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, we're gonna take no action on the local law number four of twenty twenty-four. Engineering?
I need a motion, supervisor.
Uh, finance, budget revision, please.
I've previously submitted four budget revisions for your approval, and tonight I ask, um, for your approval through the process, though.
I'd love to Jackie to review them with her, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, at our last work session on September ninth, we received a letter-
She has a budget.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Jackie.
Budget.
That's okay.
Okay. Budget revision.
Um, no, I have the twenty twenty-five tentative budget to, um, be distributed to you tonight, and I ask for your acceptance. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the supervisor and the board and all of the department heads for all of their work in compiling the budget. Um, their collaboration, their hard work, commitment to the residents, I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. It's hard to speak, taking someone, and then you wanna give us, you ask, after all that work, so.
We're getting there.
Pardon?
We're getting there.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. So the twenty twenty-five schedule of salaries for elected town officials are as follows. Um, highway superintendent, eighty thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. Town clerk, seventy thousand, two hundred and eight dollars. Supervisor, forty thousand, one hundred and eight dollars. But annual sar, salary for the supervisor position, um, street roger currently only accepts thirty-five thousand with salary, and we were equal to thirteen thousand, one hundred and eight dollars. Town justices, thirty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-three, and council members, fifteen thousand, nine hundred and six.
Jackie, is that it?
That's it, thank you.
So in our last work session on September ninth, we received a letter of resignation from our town clerk, Donna Garfinkel, after thirty-four and a half years of service in the town of Lewiston. I would personally like to take this opportunity to thank Donna for her years of hard work for the residents of Lewiston, and there's no question of Donna's work ethic. I wish her nothing but the best in her retirement, and wish her and Neil good health and a happy retirement. So God bless you, uh, Donna. With that being said, on October fourth, we'll have a vacancy in the town clerk's position. So at this time, I'm going to make a motion that Amy Smith, being Lewiston Town Clerk, effective on October seventh, get the current town clerk's salary.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried. So with that, now that leaves a vacancy in the supervisor's office for a confidential secretary. So at this time, as it's the supervisor's appointment, I would like to appoint Natalie Safferty as the confidential secretary to the town supervisor at a rate of twenty-five fifty an hour, effective October seventh, twenty twenty-four. I need a motion to accept that at a rate of twenty-five fifty per hour.
I'll make that motion in second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried. So the Gate of Heaven water bill, I was contacted, I was actually informed by Tamara, uh, the Gate of Heaven having an extremely large water bill, approximately seventeen thousand dollars. They had a major leak up there. Um, with that, I, I talked to our, um, attorney, Tom Seaman, Niall Vax in this case, because Tom also represents the water, uh, Narki County Water. We are working with Gate of Heaven to try and make some kind of resolution. Um, cemeteries are unique in that if anything happens to a cemetery, they become town property, and we don't want that to happen. So we are within our rights to negotiate some type of settlement on their water bill. I just wanted to advise everybody that I was working on it, there's no decision to be made tonight, and hopefully at our next meeting, we'll have a settlement in place. Um, senior center, center lighting, I know our previous meeting, we approved getting a bid on senior center lighting, we got scope of work, and after looking at the scope of work, we made some changes to it. We've just received the new scope of work, so that hopefully will go up to bid this week, so that's the update on that. So with that, I will move to Councilman Jacoby for his meeting, so.
And we have one thing, uh, John Nollcheck from Upper Mount Flyer Company would like to add- And we have one thing. Uh, John Mallcheck from Upper Mount Flyer Company would like to add, following individual to their role. Isn't a member of Upper Mount Flyer Company, his name is Nathan, Al Coop, High Coop? And, uh, I make that a motion?
Second. The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mr. Supervisor.
Motion carried. Uh, Councilman Myers? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Morial.
I'd like, uh, we have, our new cars were brought in for the town employees here at the town hall. And I'd like to place the old ones on Auction International. We have two two thousand and eighteen Honda Clarity pluggers and one two thousand and ten Chevy Express Van. Um, I'd like to have a motion to place them on Auction International.
Motion? That's right. Pardon, you want it seconded?
No, seconded.
Seconded.
The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried.
And at the motion patrol center, we've got three bids where we place the windows.
Oh, the windows, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're going to do the, we tabled the roof replacement.
Okay.
Okay, we've got three bids, one from Harley, Cr, Crud Corporation for forty-seven thousand, eight twenty. One from American Glass at twenty-eight thousand, seven seventy. And one from Sterling Glass for twenty-six thousand, seventeen. I would make the motion to give the job to the lowest bidder of Sterling Glass for the twenty-six thousand, seventeen.
Second. The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried. Councilman Myers? Councilwoman Welter?
Okay, yes. Um, I am going to make a motion to be able to, um, for the senior center to be able to hire a part-time van driver. Um, first of all, I want to thank Jackie, Amy and Melinda for working on this and putting it together. Uh, the first thing I want to say is that it's not going to affect the budget. Uh, the hours will be split between, currently I think there's two drivers, this would be the third.
Three.
There's, so there's three. Um, and then what this is to do is to come, uh, for coverage for vacations and for any kind of medical need for any of the current drivers. Because I do understand that come next winter, about February, March, a couple of the van drivers might be using extended vacation. Uh, and also too, I do want to point out that in August, the van was used for one hundred and twenty-nine medical appointments, one hundred and thirty-five of lunch program. Individuals utilized it, nine for, uh, coming to the center for activities and thirty-one for the, uh, shopping. So I do think that it's, it's something that's definitely needed. Our community needs that, so I'm looking for a second.
Well, Councilor? The motion is second and I wanted to say, we're, I talked to Sarah about this, I talked to Melinda. It's not adding any dollars to the, uh, to the budget. It's literally just having a, a, a driver who takes the others camp for further duty. So, um, there's no uniform needed, there's no any, there's no expense whatsoever, so, um, with that, we have a motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried.
Okay, and then the other thing is that, uh, town rec would like to, um, have the following seasonal hire in the recreational department for the fall/winter recreational season. It would be for Nicole Short, recreational leader part-time at sixteen dollars and twenty-two cents per hour. And the seasonal hours would start September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four, if I can have second.
Second. The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Um, upcoming boards, commission meetings, historic preservation is October eighth at five-thirty, five PM. Parks and Rec is October sixteenth at seven PM. zoning board is October tenth at six PM. Planning board is October seventeenth at six-thirty PM. The work session is now actually, October seventeenth, correct? Seventeenth.
October.
Yep, October seventeenth at five-thirty.
Planning is accepted.
Pardon?
Planning is accepted.
Yeah, so the planning board has changed to seven PM. Thank you. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Excuse me, one more, one more question, please. Actually, it's a response.
Okay.
Quick response. Councilwoman Welter said that she toured the plant and that it was double the capacity. I, I don't know if you're aware of this article, I'd like to give it to you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's an article from, uh, two thousand and six. Uh, article was done on the, the facility specifically and I believe the title is, it's, were full. Um, so, and I don't recall, I know Jeff gave us answers as to all the improvements that were done. And I don't recall any of the improvements that would handle that capacity. As you'll read that article, that was done in two thousand and six, it was near capacity then. And that was before we had all this infrastructure. So, but thank you and go Bills.
Thank you. They're up six, nothing.
Oh.
I got a tax. Give a motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried. Jack?